... The United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for this day and the many blessings we've received. We pray for your continued protection of our community. Please bless our Hammond students as they embark on their future endeavors and guide them on the path to success. We ask for your guidance in all matters that affect our city in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Clerk Golick will call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Raykels.
Here.
Opinkers.
Here.
Moving on to our distribution of council scholarship awards.
Well, once again, I'd like to thank you on behalf of our students that are recipients of these scholarships. And what we're going to do this evening is I am going to call on the administrator or counselor from each building that is here and have them introduce their students that are recipients of your scholarships. And then, Danit, if you want to come down and shake their hand, and I don't know if you want to have any of the other councilmen and women join you from their district too, so however you want to do it. But I'm going to go ahead and start with Bishop Knoll, and I'm going to call Michelle Arnold, who is the guidance counselor at Bishop Knoll, to come and introduce her winner.
I also wanted to say thank you for making this scholarship available to our students. Our student, her name is Amber Williams. She is going to go to Franklin College where she's going to play volleyball. She's been on our volleyball team all four years of high school. She's going to major in exercise science, and she wants to become a physical therapist. Amber Williams.
Next, I'll call on Sean Egan from Haas.
I would simply like to say first, before I invite Victor to present himself, because he's more well spoken than I am, that I've known Victor since he came to our school in seventh grade. He was the quietest child ever. He is now third in his class, an incredibly accomplished young man. If I'd like to invite Victor to speak about himself, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for making the scholarship available to me and giving me this opportunity to gain the scholarship. Like Dr. Egan said, I've been to Haas since seventh grade, been there all through high school, and absolutely loved it. Some projects I did this year were some work with World Trade Alliance at Norfolk, Indiana. I'm a board member there, or an associate board member, so I'm rotating. And I will be studying business at Indiana University this fall.
Now, I'm going to call on the principals from the School City of Hammond schools. But before I do that, I do want to say thank you to Esther Good, who's with us this evening. She's my director of secondary, and she came with me this evening to support our secondary schools. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Rob Wilson, who's our principal at Clark Middle High School.
I too would like to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity and that you're given to our students. They work hard, and I get the pleasure of seeing them for seven years, because we're in middle school and high school. Most of our students go to our middle school, too. At this time, I'd like to call up Pedro Alvarado, Esmeralda Ceballos, and Jocelyn Perez. I'm going to just say a little bit about them, and then I'm going to invite them. If they'd like to say anything, they sure can. Just a little bit about Jocelyn. Jocelyn has been accepted into multiple colleges. She had no problems getting accepted. She has decided that she's going to go to Ball State University. She'll be attending there to major in psychology. And she's a member of the National Honor Society. She's played softball for Clark. She was president at the Rotary World Affairs Conference, and she participated in the two-day CRS Student Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together event that was held earlier this year, along with, I do believe, city police officers and whatnot. Esmeralda Ceballos, she's decided to major in psychology at IU PUI. She's in the top ten of her class, treasurer for the class of 2016, treasurer for the National Honor Society. She likes money. Varsity tennis player, captain of the academic team, and she's been a member of the Science Olympia team also. Pedro Alvarado is a senior at Clark, of course. He is very active in the Educational Talent Search Program at Purdue University Calumet and his local church. Pedro has been accepted into the Exploratory Studies Program at Purdue University West Lafayette this fall. Pedro is probably his own worst critic. He is very, very cognizant of his work. He knows his work is a symbol of who he is, and he strives for perfection. I will say that. I've had many conversations with him last year, this year, to just relax, it'll all come together. It's hard to say, but it's also a hard quality to find nowadays in kids. A lot of times, they like just to get it done, and it's over. Not with Pedro. So I just want to award them their certificates, and then welcome up to the podium to say anything they wish to say.
Thank you so much.
I suppose I would just like to say thank you as well. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
You're welcome.
Next, I'd like to call on Michelle Landis, the principal of Gavitt Middle High School.
Good evening. And once again, I want to, just like the others, thank you for this opportunity for our two students. Jada and Ben Turpin are both outstanding students at Gavitt. Jada has been involved in volleyball, dance, peer mentoring, natural helpers, and ignite. She plans to attend ISU and major in pre-med with a minor in biology. Ben Turpin has been involved in many things as well: swimming, track, cross-country, mock trial, natural helpers. He is planning to attend IU Bloomington, and he wants to major in anthropology. So thank you, if you wanted to say thank you as well.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity for this scholarship.
Thank you for helping pay for my college.
Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Johnny Goodlow, our principal at Hammond High.
Good evening. I wanted to echo the same sentiments as those who came up here previously, and thank you all for the opportunity that you've given our students. I'd like to introduce our students from Hammond High that was awarded these scholarships. First of all, I want to start with DaShay Brown. She will be attending Indiana State University, majoring in psychology in the fall. Brian Barazza, he'll be attending Purdue Northwest. He will be majoring in mechanical engineering. And then Destiny Flores, who will be attending IU Northwest, majoring in pre-med. These are three excellent students from Wildcat country, and we are so gracious that you were able to give them this opportunity for them to advance in their careers.
Thank you for helping further my education.
I would like to extend my gratitude and many thanks for the opportunity you've just given me, because as everybody knows, college is very hard to pay for, and this is me to laugh at me. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for the privilege of having this scholarship, and I'm thankful for you helping me further my education.
I want to say something before I introduce the last person, and that is, if you've noticed, so far, we've had every scholarship winner here, and Mr. Easton has assured me that all of his are here this evening, and I think that might be a first for us. And I think the lesson learned is that you have to have a cold, rainy council meeting for everybody to get here, because these kids are involved in so many things that what happens if they're involved in spring sports, they're usually out doing their spring sport, but probably everything's canceled tonight so that nobody's able to make it here. So I'm really excited about that. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Greg Easton, who is our principal at Warren High School.
Does it sound like she wasn't real confident in me? For a second there? That they are all here, and I am, if you have about an hour, I'll go through all the accolades and all the accomplishments of these five incredible kids, but we don't. So I am going to just introduce them to you. Come on down, guys. First, we have Aviance Roberts. And Aviance, there's Aviance. Aviance is going to IU Bloomington, and she is going to be studying pharmaceutical science. Maurice Weldon is going to Capital University in Columbus, Ohio, where he will have a double major in physical therapy and computer science. Haley Delgado is going to Purdue Calumet, where she'll be studying human development. And Bertha Andrade is going to Purdue Lafayette, where she'll be studying biology. And Justin Myers, who was just recently awarded Eagle Scout status, he will be going to Ivy Tech, and he intends to pursue welding. Guys, if you'd like to say anything, you're free to.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and thank you for giving me this scholarship to further my education. Thank you for letting me be the first college graduate of my family.
I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
I would also like to say thank you very much for this opportunity of awarding this scholarship. I know with my Eagle Scout that I will definitely be going to college very soon at Ivy Tech, and that I can pursue forward with my career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have all fifteen recipients come up here for a picture with Okay. You folks would like to leave? You're more than welcome to leave. If you want to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome to stay for it, too. All right. Boy, you're here until midnight.
Make it a first. Everybody leave. No crowd here. Okay, moving on to reading of minutes.
President. Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from April 25, 2016.
Second. This is a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, on acceptance of the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on acceptance of the claims? Clerk Golick will call a vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson. Raykels.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, eight zero, one absent. Moving to public hearing. There are none. Next will be communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received communications from the Hammond Animal Control, and it says, "Dear Councilman Higgs, this is to confirm that we see the delay dated March 16 through April 26, 2016. On March 17, controlled a three-block radius and saw no cats or any deceased cats. We set up traps at 924 Ames Street because the residents stated there was a sick cat by their house. On May 2, 2016, our office contacted the residents at 928 Becker and made arrangements to take the cat trap to their property and set it up in their backyard. Pursued to 91-077, and then the residents requested cat trap. The Hammond Animal Control, the residents were required to deposit $25 prior to receiving the trap. The trap is returned in the sad condition of the weather. When the resident received the trap, the deposit shall be refunded to the resident. Should you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Sincerely, Hammond Animal Control."
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to let everyone know that this coming Saturday, May 14, is the City of Hammond's annual flower giveaway. For anyone who presents an Indiana driver's license or state ID showing their Hammond address, they will receive free flowers. That is for your yard. That is at the Gene Shepherd Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Counselors of the Hall will be bringing out 16-13.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, May 17, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at 6:30 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. On Thursday, May 19, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Gene Shepherd Center at 7:00 p.m. Thursday, May 12, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College. That begins at 6:30 p.m. For those who attend the South Hammond Crime Watch, if you, we're not quite sure if there is going to be a meeting on Thursday, May 19. The director, Mr. George Janik, is currently in the hospital, and we don't know what's going to happen with that meeting. So if anyone is interested, you can contact Sergeant John Muda. His phone number is 852-6374. Also, I would like to announce that the 2016 Hammond Security Light Program is coming up again. Qualified applicants will receive a free security light. You must own and reside in your Hammond home. You must provide proof of homeownership. You must provide a valid driver's license or state ID. Applications must be received in person only between June 6 and June 10, and that is the only window that is available to submit your application. That will be at City Hall on the first floor in room 115. Quantities are limited, and we would like to thank Mayor Tom McDermott Jr. and the Hammond Urban Enterprise Association for being so generous with this program, and also Hammond Community Watch for administering the program. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Quantities are limited, so please hurry.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Moving on to ordinances, third and final reading.
Ordinance 16-13, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. And ordinance to men, ordinance 3890, 4934, 6009, 7972, 8172, 8328, and 8750, also known as Chapter 76, Schedule 7 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it relates to through truck route streets in the 1st District of Hammond.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for final passage of 16-13.
Second. Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, and final passage of 16-13. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I would like to move for 1613A to be...
In its entirety?
In its entirety, to replace 1613. Thank you.
There's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Higgs, to move that 1613A in its entirety, replace 1613A. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on that? Clerk Golick will call a vote on 1613A.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykels.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 1613 passes, eight zero, one absent. Now, 1613 as-is? Clerk Golick will call a vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Excuse me. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykels.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 1613 passes, eight zero, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introductions of ordinances or urns on, resolutions are urns on. Next will be new unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to send a letter to Home Depot thanking them for their generosity and giving back to the community in which I represent the 3rd District of the City of Hammond, with providing bags and gloves to be distributed throughout my district. I thank them so much for Cleanup Week, and unfortunately, there's only a limited supply, but certainly, if I can get any more bags, I will continue to distribute them through the district. That's the move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Vines, to send a letter to Home Depot thanking them for the cleanup supplies they provided for Cleanup Day in the 3rd District. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like a letter sent to the Department of Public Works requesting a list of the trees that are to be cut in the City of Hammond, especially the 2nd District.
Okay, there's a motion to have a letter sent to the Department of Public Works, a list of the trees that are on the list to be cut down. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on Councilman Higgs. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
There seems to be, at least I think it is, a problem with trees in the city. There's a waiting list of two to three years that people have to wait for trees in the parkways and on easements to be cut. I want to talk to, I need some advice on how to find a way to talk to the administration and the council, see if there's a way we can expedite this process. Right now, I know there's some problems before, but this is a neo era. Maybe we can find some ways to speed up that process. I was thinking two or three weeks is a long time to wait, not a long two and three years. So I still move, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Your motion's already been made, Councilman Torres.
Well...
As far as agrees.
I don't know if it takes a meeting or a special meeting, whatever use it to.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for some clarity, as it relates to trees, in my particular district, I personally paid a service to do some of the trees. Unfortunately, I don't know what the problem is. We have an ordinance on the book that I brought up, introduced, and was second by this council as it relates to trees and debris on property. Even with the property on 164th, I got a letter in regards to that, responding back to it, the trees being removed. To this day, it hasn't been cut. When the demolition company comes and demos a property, it should be their responsibility to take the trees out as well. For whatever reason, it's not happening in my district. There are a number of properties that are either on tax sales, that's throughout the city, either they're on tax sales, or either they're just people that walked away from their property and left it there, and the county owns the property now, and the trees are just sitting there. Something needs to be done. If a mechanism needs to be put in place, or ordinance needs to be put on the books where immediately, you know, these people are fined, are given a citation for not cleaning up the property, if they own it...
trees that are to be cut in the City of Hammond, especially the 2nd District.
Okay, there's a motion to have a letter sent to the Department of Public Works, a list of the trees that are on the list to be cut down. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on Councilman Higgs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
There seems to be, at least I think it is, a problem with trees in the city. There's a waiting list of two to three years that people have to wait for trees in the parkways and on eastmans to be cut. I wanna talk to, I need some advice on how to find a way to talk to the administration and the council, see if there's a way we can expedite this process. Right now, I, I know there's some problems before, but this is a new era. Maybe we can find some ways to speed up that process. I was thinking two or three weeks is a long time to wait, not, not a long, two and three years. So I so move, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Your motion's already been made, Councilman Torres.
Well...
As far as the trees.
I don't know if it takes a meeting or a special meeting of whatever you suggest.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for some clarity, as it relates to trees, in my particular district, I personally paid a service to do some of the trees. Unfortunately, I don't know what the problem is. We have an ordinance on the book that I brought up, introduced, and was second by this council, as it relates to trees and debris on property. Even with the property on 164th, I got a letter in regards to that, responding back to it, the trees being removed. To this day, it hasn't been cut. When the demolition company comes and demos a property, it should be their responsibility to take the trees out as well. For whatever reason, it's not happening in my district. There are a number of properties that are either on tax sales, that's throughout the city, either they're on tax sales, or either they're just people that walked away from their property and left it there, and the county owns the property now, and the trees are just sitting there. Something needs to be done. If a mechanism needs to be, get put in place, or ordinance needs to be put on the books where immediately, you know, these people are fined, are given a citation for not cleaning up the property. If they own it, put a lien on the property. I mean, that's the proper procedure. Put a lien on the property and make them responsible for cleaning up the dead trees. It's ridiculous. Right across the street on Soul Avenue, which is in your district, Councilman, there's a tree been sitting there at least two years. Right across the street from the post office. It's so embarrassing. We need to find a ordinance and make it enforceable so that these trees are cleaned up throughout the entire city. Whatever needs to be done, I'm willing to help you 110%. I've been crying out for having these trees removed off vacant lots for quite some time. So that's one way you can address it, and hopefully, we have one ordinance on the book, and you could research it with Berger, and try to come up with additional ordinances in terms of addressing it. That's the only way I can see it happening. And if you wanna request the mayor, maybe give us some casino funding and assist with the project, maybe that can happen.
Can I ask your question, Councilman?
Mr. Chairman, I agreed with Councilman Higgs, because I have a few lots in the 2nd District that also need some cleaning up, not only with debris, but fallen trees and dead trees and so forth. So if we can talk to the administration with the mayor, that's fine. If it takes additional money, or I don't know what solution is. But something needs to be done, because it shouldn't have to wait through three years.
Okay, moving on. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, yes, Councilman Higgs, when is your cleanup?
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs.
We had cleanup this weekend. I distributed bags, and you're more than welcome, Councilman Vanez, to donate some bags, so I can distribute them throughout the district.
Oh, so it's this weekend? Okay.
We, this past weekend and all week long, if we get additional bags, I'll distribute them. But there are a number of places throughout the district that needs cleaning up, so I'm looking for volunteers. Anyone's willing to help out, I appreciate it.
Any other new unfinished business? New unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. The only speaker signed up is Mr. George Stoya. Okay, pass. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali. All those in favor?
Aye.